Okay, I am calling to order this committee the whole meeting. First, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on a traditional unceded territory. This now is First Nation. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. I'll just simply make the motion that the April 12th, 2023, committee of the whole meeting, agenda be adopted as presented. Is there a second or two? Second by Councilor Lerner, any discussion? Hearing none. I will call the question, all those in favor and opposed. It's carried unanimously. That takes us onto public input period. So persons recognized by the chair must first state their name and address for the record, may speak once for up to two minutes unless council resolves otherwise, or unlimited to providing comment regarding items listed on the agenda for this evening's meeting. Comments must be directed to the chair or not to be directed individual council members, staff, or the audience, and must not include personal issues. Welcome to Lansville. So through to the gallery, anybody wishing to provide public input this evening? Okay, and we don't have any remotely registered. Okay, thank you. All right, so that was quick. So we're on to item five of our agendas, or under general matters, we have delegations this evening. So just before we get started, just a warm welcome to the RDN management team this evening. I was quite surprised to look up and actually see them in person, which is just a complete shocker. So just for council's benefit, I'll just do a general introduction. So we'll start with the CAO Doug Holmes. And then we'll go to the back, which is Lisa Grant, and she is the General Manager of Development Emergency Services. And then the next two will introduce themselves as they come to the podium. So with that being said, we'll start with Darren Marshall. He's the Senior Manager, Transportation Services with RDN, and he has PowerPoint presentation. So welcome, Mr. Marshall, and whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. Through your worship to council, I'm Darren Marshall, the Senior Manager for Transportation Services. Thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the RDN transit system and current challenges. Mobility and transit in any community are key to accessing basic services such as employment, healthcare, and education and social supports. Mobility also influences access to recreation and the ability for individuals to actively participate within the community. The Transportation Services Department is a standalone department with a senior manager that reports directly to the CAO. There is a manager, administration, superintendents, and five departments. Those are maintenance, road support, conventional transit, custom transit, which is also referred to as HandyDart, and dispatch. The RDN's partnership with BC Transit is bound by an annual agreement referred to as the Annual Operating Agreement, or AOA. That begins April 1st and ends March 31st of each year. They're presented, the AOA's are presented to the RDN Board for approval annually. The AOA supports conventional transit at 46.69% to BC Transit and 53.31% to the RDN. Custom cost share is higher for BC Transit at 66.69% and 33.31% to the RDN. Interregional service is supported at the same cost-sharing model as conventional service, 46.69% BC Transit, with the remainder 53.31% further cost shared with the Couch and Valley Regional District. It's a 50-50 split, so it's about 26% each for the interregional service. The system's supported by a network of six exchanges at major hubs and over 800 bus stops. The conventional system was established in 1967 as a fixed route service to major destinations in residential areas and currently uses a fleet of 55 buses, full-size buses, and four small-size community buses. Custom service started in the early 90s and is defined as accessible door-to-door service for people with permanent or temporary disabilities. Custom fleet uses 15 small-size buses. Interregional transit service from Nanaimo to Duncan, the 70 NCX, was established March of 2022, last year. The southern, the RDN transit system is divided into two zones, northern and southern. And interregional service, transit service is a separate board-approved, five-year memorandum of understanding with Couch and Valley Regional District and BC Transit. The map on the left displays the southern transit zone from Electoral Area A through Nanaimo to Lansville. The map on the right displays the interregional transit service from downtown Nanaimo to downtown Duncan. The northern transit zone begins at the border of Lansville and Electoral Area E through Electoral Areas G and H, Parksville, Qualcomm Beach, and further, to the further northern point in the transit system, Deep Bay. As you can see from the maps on our transit system, has a long, narrow corridor which supports a strong need to establish a rapid line that will service north and south efficiently and quickly and feed the local bus routes to move people effectively east and west. Lansville's future network, as per the Transit Redevelopment Strategy, also referred to as the TRS, in Year Two, Service Strategy Four, it is recommended that the 11 Lansville change to the 31 Lansville. It will have a focus on higher ridership in densified areas of the community, extending service in the north to the eastern side of the Highway 19 next to Snanawas Community, as done for Lansville Day's events. Introduce service to Ware Road and continue to travel in a clockwise direction. Further changes would be increased frequency to 60 minutes during weekday peak periods and afternoons and Saturday afternoons, and 120 minutes or two-hour intervals at other times, but extend later into the evening. In Year Five, Service Strategy Fifteen of the TRS, there are further recommendations to adjust the 31 Lansville to operate in a more linear path and extend the route north through Nanus Bay along Northwest Bay Road to Parksville, as shown in the map on the right. This would service both sides of the road rather than, in both directions, rather than just a clockwise direction only. The Transit Redevelopment Strategy is a five-year guiding document that will see the transit system expand by more than 50% or 70,000 annual service hours pending provincial funding and RDN Board approval. The challenge has been, BC Transit and the province have deferred the last two years of expansions to all local government partners. That was for 2022 and 2023. We continue to lobby the Minister of Transportation Infrastructure to reward transit systems like the RDN that have large expansion plans with guiding documents like the TRS and our Facility Master Plan to support. Staff will also be preparing an annual three-year expansion plan with BC Transit to request our annual expansion hours for 2024, 2025, and 2026, and present those to the TSC later this fall, the Transit Select Committee. Upgrades are being considered to the downtown Nanaimo Country Club and Wood Grove exchanges as they are also essential to the TRS initiatives by establishing a rapid line along the Nanaimo Corridor and these major hubs. The Facilities Master Plan will be a guiding document for the anticipated growth in the transit system over the next few years. It will also provide a transition to fully battery electric buses. They refer to them in the industry as BEBs, so you may hear that from time to time. Interregional transit service, staff will continue discussions with, new discussions with Comox Valley Regional District in 2023 to explore interregional service in the north with BC Transit taking the lead on the planning. The fare review, the RDN Board is responsible for setting the RDN Transit fare pricing. BC Transit will take the lead in a four-to-six-month fare review that includes public engagement and feedback sometime late in this year or 2024. They haven't, we haven't quite ironed out exactly the timeline for that. There are three board committees that the Transportation Services Department participates in. The first is the Transit Select Committee. This is the committee that initially receives and reviews all transit-related reports, and then final review and approval is done at the regular board meeting. It is here that the elected officials that represent each electoral area for Lansville, that would be your worship Mayor Swain, could bring forward new motions and with respect to the District of Lansville or RDN Transit System as a whole. We also participate in the Electoral Area Services Committee and the Regional District Board. Thank you for allowing me the time to present today, the RDN Transit System, and I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Marshall. Through to council, any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Savage.
Hi Darren, good to see you again. I was Chair of the Transit Committee back in the 90s when we approved having signs, commercial signs on the buses to increase income, reduce costs. So the first year, I thought I'd support it and put an ad for my business on the bus. My wife didn't speak to me for weeks when she saw my big face on the bus, so I'm curious what happened to that plan. I saw them for years, and I assumed it was making decent money over the years, but why was it curtailed, you know?
Through your worship. So the program, the advertisements on the bus is still in effect. The contract is held with BC Transit through Patterson Group, and we still do advertisements today, and it does offset our operating costs.
Just on the back of the bus, though, is it?
You can, you can buy just the back piece of the bus, the lower section, or you can do, it's a full wrap, but it's below the glass on the, where the passengers sit. It was, it was creating blind spots for the operator because the, they were all little perforated type advertisement material, and it was, it was, yeah, creating issues for that. So they, they limited to just below the glass, and if you do just a half wrap on the, it can only be on the curb side. So it's either the back, the curb, the, or not the curb side, sorry, on the roadside, or a full wrap, you get both sides and the back, the full back.
Great, all right, thank you. And the second quick one, what sort of relationship is there between population in a municipality and the viability of transit? And are the taxes still the same, or is it actually start going down when you get to a certain population?
No, the bylaw is still the same. It's been updated a little bit, but it's, it's still apportioned as per each municipality.
Yeah, so is there a certain amount of population that makes them more viable?
It's a portion by revenue hours and revenue kilometers that the buses travel.
All right, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Jones.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. You talked about some of the plans for the future in Lansville for bus routes, mentioning, I think, something up in Upper and around the Snanawas area, which I assume is the new petrol station and Ware Road. How have you prioritized those routes? I assume you've laid them out, at least in draft form. How have you prioritized and what services do you see coming first as you expand for Lansville? Thank you.
Thank you, through your worship, to Councilor Jones. So they're prioritized through, in the TR, the Transit Redevelopment Strategy, which is a five-year, so each year has sort of laid out how the system will, will absorb the hours that we're requesting. So the first year is 5,000 hours, and it goes to building the rapid line on the major corridor on Highway 19 in Nanaimo. The second year, which I outlined a little bit, was, sorry, let me just, yeah, Year Two, Service Strategy Four, and just for your benefit too, I've left two, the hard copies of the Transit Redevelopment Strategy for reference, and also on the, at the bottom of the slide deck, there's a link to the electronic version, which can be a little bit easier to find things. So on Year Two, Strategy Four, that's the first step for Lansville to change the number, and then a little bit of routing changing, which would include Ware Road and the, instead of turning, going straight across past the fire hall on Superior Road, it would turn left on the highway, go down to Lansville Road, and then turn right, and then we'd probably position a bus stop at that location so that it's convenient for the community to come and access that, that stop to take advantage of the bus route. And then in Year Five, it talked about in Service Strategy Fifteen was developing more of a linear route and extending up through Nanus on Northwest Bay Road to Parksville, and then that's when it would be in both directions. So currently, it just, it does a counterclockwise, or counterclockwise direction route in one way, so all the bus stops are on one side of the road, where we'd have to just add bus stops across from each of the locations, the current locations. And so those are the highlights for the Lansville upgrades.
Thank you, and one other quick question, if you don't mind. You mentioned you have some sort of special fleet of buses. I'm thinking this might include buses that are more user-friendly for seniors, and perhaps you have different schedules, times, locations for those. So I imagine you look at the Lansville population and demographic and make projections, you know, into the future for how those needs might change, and I'm wondering what you have found from that, if that research has been done.
Yeah, through your worship to Councilor Jones. So part of the Transit Redevelopment Strategy, again, is identifying what buses to use, and the recommendation, strong recommendation is that we buy or lease through BC Transit some of their mid-size buses. So in the documentation, it does show a recommendation of how many full-size buses, and then a blend of mid-size buses. And so we might see in the future some mid-size buses using, like you said, on maybe some of the routes that have a little bit less ridership, we'll supplement those with the smaller bus. Yeah, we do currently, in Parksville, Qualcomm, we use the smaller community buses.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, Councilor Lerner, go ahead.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the presentation, very, very good and very interesting, thank you. I was curious if you had any, or you might not have them now, you might be able to send them later, but any ridership statistics on how things have changed over the years with regards to ridership at Lansville, HandyDart service bookings and things like that? And also if you had any projections for the transition to the fully electric buses as far as the timeframe goes, and whether there are certain areas that are being prioritized for that. I assume they need to be rolled out in conjunction with charging stations and things like that. So, thank you.
Through your worship, to Councilor Lerner. So with respect to ridership, we did do, I can't remember if it was December or January, we did, BC Transit did a ridership review, so we might have some data in there, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll look back and find their presentation, and I'll forward that on to council. And with respect to electric buses, we're in the process of evaluating our facility for electric buses, which would include the charging stations, and BC Transit has received their first electric bus. They're putting it through the Paces down in Victoria, and the, the next bus that we receive will be electric buses. Our expansions will see only electric buses in the next probably two to five years, we're anticipating.
Excellent, thank you, much appreciated.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, again, thank you, Mr. Marshall, for your presentation. It's always a pleasure to have the RDN, and more so when you're in person, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we have Erica Beauchamp, she's the Manager of Emergency Services for the Regional District of Nanaimo, so welcome Erica, if, when you're ready, not quite.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Swain. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Erica Beauchamp, I'm the Manager of Emergency Services for the Regional District of Nanaimo, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide this presentation to you this evening on emergency planning for Lansville. I got the button the first time, that's a win. Tonight, we'll, I'll go over your emergency management legislative requirements, and then we'll talk about Lansville Emergency Program, and what is an EOC, the role of the policy group, decision-making in an EOC, a little bit about emergency support services, and then some of the challenges and initiatives within emergency management. There's a lot of, a lot of words associated to legislative requirements there. There are several guiding documents as far as emergency management legislation. The first, recently, emergency management has been taken, or is now under the Ministry of Emergency Management and Climate Readiness, so formerly it was EMBC, you might be familiar with that acronym, now it is EMCR, so be aware that you might hear that term kind of going forward. In BC, the Emergency Program Act and the associated regulations provide a legislative framework for management of disasters and emergencies in the province, that is, as it is currently. The EPA outlines the roles and responsibilities of the provincial and local governments, provides for the use of emergency powers, enables provision of disaster financial assistance, and provides exemption from liability. The EPA, or Emergency Program Act, outlines roles and responsibilities for provincial and local governments, and provides for the emergency powers. So what that means, we'll talk about it a little bit later on, but it does enable the provision of disaster financial assistance and also provides exemption from liability. Sorry, duplicating what I said. Emergency Program Management Regulation outlines each ministry's roles, and then the Local Authority Emergency Management Regulation specifies roles and responsibilities of the local authorities, including components of a written emergency program. And lastly, Compensation and Disaster Financial Assistance Regulation defines framework for accessing funds to assist local governments and residents to recover from disasters. The, one of the major changes coming up is that the Emergency Program Act will be revamped, or has been revamped, and they will be implementing the new emergency management legislation sometime in 2023. It's meant to be in spring of this year, likely, I'm anticipating, maybe summer. So Lansville Emergency Program is managed through an agreement with the RDN, so there is financial compensation for RDN to provide that. We coordinate emergent, or EOC response and short-term recovery operations, provide grant application support, communication and public emergency preparedness, so attend outreach events, emergency public notification in the form of Voiant Alert, coordinate training, provide emergency support, emergency support services and communication support services in the form of volunteer management, and manage the regional emergency management agreement. There are several guiding documents for Lansville Emergency Program. First is the Planning Service Provider Agreement between the RDN and Lansville. There is an emergency, or a Lansville Emergency Plan, this will be updated in the future once the emergency management legislation comes into place, and all of the, the changes that need to be incorporated into emergency plans can be translated into new emergency plans. There are also three reception center agreements in Lansville, so there's St. Philip's Church, Royal Canadian Legion, and Costin Hall. We also have a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which was completed in 2020, approved by council in February 2021. There's also BSEM's, or British Columbia Emergency Management System, the provincial legislation, which I've mentioned previously, and the Lansville Evacuation Route Plan, which was completed in 2020. So what is an Emergency Operations Center? It's a centralized location of emergency response and recovery support operations during an emergency incident. So for Lansville, it is here in council chambers, and for the RDN, if there's a regional event where we need to activate a regional EOC, the EOC is located in our boardroom. What do we do in an EOC? Local government staff support the needs of emergency responders. So when an event exceeds the capacity of emergency responders in the field, an EOC is activated to support them, or where there's a need for a coordination of multiple agencies during a response. We also, an EOC provides interagency coordination and executive decision-making, coordinates public information, manages the organizational risk, coordinates and supports emergency response and recovery, tracks emergency response progress and resources, coordinates resource requests beyond the agreements that are already in place, such as mutual aids and automatic aid agreements, and also tracks costs and provincial expenditure approvals. What does that mean for you? The policy group is the group that would be made up by the mayor and council. So within the British Columbia Emergency Management System, the standards are that the policy group would be made up by the, for you, the mayor's. the policy group would be made up by the, for you, the mayors and council. And using the principles of B S E Ms, the E O C would be structured with local government staff. So you'll see an example of a potential organizational chart for an E O C activation. It is meant to be an expanding or contracting organizational chart depending on the needs of a response. So your response activation might not look like that every time. This is a very big activation response. At the top, you see where the policy group is located within the structure. It's also important to note that there are different sections. So there's operations, planning, logistics, and finance, and each of those has a different specific role within the E O C. The operations are the doers, planning are the thinkers, logistics are the getters, and finance are the payers, to keep it very simple. So roles and responsibilities of the policy group within an activated E O C. As mentioned, recommended membership are mayor and councils. You would provide overall emergency policy and direction as far as emergency powers that need to be enacted. So if there are items such as a declaration of a state of local emergency that's needed in order to activate powers outside of your standard powers as a local government, that would be what the policy group would provide direction on. You also set expenditure limits. It's recommended that you discuss and set expenditure limits prior to the need to activate an E O C, and you consider the potential needs, financial needs in an activation so that an E O C director has the ability to make decisions during an activation. You also would provide formal requests for outside support, particularly for provincial and federal support. You would, as mentioned, authorize declaration and termination of states of local emergency, and then provide some public information activities. You'd provide input for the emergency public information, and you may act as a spokesperson for jurisdictional, for the jurisdiction as requested. Other emergency powers that you might be enacting if you need to declare a state of local emergency would be ordering an evacuation, authorizing entry into any building or on any land, prohibiting travel to or from an area. You may delegate any of your powers under the Emergency Program Act to the E O C director with the exception of declaring a state of local emergency. So decision-making within an E O C typically looks like what you see on the screen. A first responder in the field determines that they have a need for resources that are beyond their capacity. So they would call someone from the emergency program, and then E O C might be activated depending on the situation, could be a really big one or a smaller level one. The E O C looks at the big picture, considers all of the issues, sets priorities, and then the policy group would authorize state of emergency, provide financial and some potential policy guidance for the E O C director, and then the province authorizes expenditures, provides guidance and support and resources to the E O C. In the past, we have done in-person training for Lansville staff for E O C. So we will look to have a move, move back to in-person training for E O C staff. One piece that I've mentioned a couple times is emergency support services. And this include, this is a volunteer group within the community, and these are people that have committed to responding to those in need. It's a volunteer group that would go out if there's someone that has had a house fire and requires some support to help locate the different resources that they need to tide them over for the next 72 hours. So we also, there's three reception centers that also provide support for E S S if there's a large group of people that needs to be located or put into somewhere to register and just tide them over for a little couple of hours. There's, we also have group lodging supplies arranged for E S S. There is some virtual training available. We have some supplier agreements and recognition. We do grant applications, volunteer appreciation, have reception centers, and then also we're moving towards some E S S electronic delivery kits, which takes a little bit of training for our E S S groups. So there are some challenges and initiatives in emergency management, one of them being the new emergency management legislation previously noted. Some of the items that we've been told will be included in this management legislation are the need to include climate change in emergency management plans, as well as to have better collaboration between, between partners. Modernization of the E S S, there's a new updated program guide for E S S. So there are some challenges associated with implementing that with our E S S volunteers. Resource supplier challenges. And then there is overall a bit of a decline in volunteerism for E S S and emergency communications, that's E C T. That is a volunteer group that is comprised of typically amateur radio enthusiasts that have committed to responding if there is a need for communications in the event of outages. Initiatives for emergency, we're working on Fire Smart Grant, evacuation planning, E O C planning and activations, agreement management, and then emergency, overall emergency program management, so emergency plans, E S S, and E C T. And we have big plans to reinvigorate the E S S program and modernize it utilizing the new program guide. Our emergency services reports go to first the Electoral Area Services Committee and then the Regional District Board, both of which my predecessor, Darren Marshall, explained very well. So I won't do that at this time. I am open for any questions. Thank you so much.
Great. Again, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Beauchamp. Through to council, right away, we have Councilor Lerner, go ahead.
Thank you so much. It was a great presentation, and it's a really valuable service that's being provided, and it looks very thorough. I had two quick questions. One was with regard to what people can do at home for emergency preparedness, because a lot of what I've heard is that when you're in a, you know, a big situation like a flood or an earthquake, they say 72 hours, you might, before, you might, if it's on emergency, before you have services restored or access or even longer. And so I'm wondering if there's a recommended educational program or incentive program for people to obtain emergency kits for their homes, those sorts of things.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Swain. Thank you for your question. I previously had a slide that showed how you can get prepared, and I ended up taking it out, so now I regret making that decision. There's definitely a lot of information that I can provide you with. We don't currently have an incentive program for preparedness kits, but you're right. Everybody should work on their own personal preparedness, including preparedness for their family. There's also Neighborhood Emergency Preparedness Program, which is a grassroots program that starts at the community level, and it's essentially neighbors, planning with other neighbors to say, hey, I have a generator and you have maybe a chainsaw. Let's work together if we need to during an emergency. Let's pool all of our resources together. So there are some programs, and I can definitely get you further information. And it's always a great idea for everybody to plan for at minimum 72 hours, but you're right, possibly more.
Excellent, thank you. That helps a lot, and if you're able to send that information, that'd be great. I'm thinking it's something we may continue to share in our public communications. The other thing I noticed was that Lansville, of course, is divided in half by a highway, and that could be an emergency route, and there could be damage to the highway. And I noticed that the majority of our, well, all of our meeting centers seem to be in lower Lansville, closer to the water side. Would it be pertinent that in the future, as, you know, the landscape of Lansville changes, that we plan for an emergency center on the mountainside of the highway on upper Lansville? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Swain. Thank you. It's a very good point, and we can definitely continue discussions about that and look to include it in the future into emergency plans. I don't know that there's a current location that you have in mind, but if there is, I'm totally open to any feedback so that we can include that as we move forward into redoing, updating the emergency plan.
Excellent, thank you, much appreciated.
You forgot about the pets. Yeah, pets, sorry. Livestock. But I'm sure there's probably some emergency planning around livestock. And I was gonna make a comment around that anyways, because I thought with respect to the new legislation, was that triggered essentially by the events that took place in Fraser Valley? All the livestock and flooding and, was that a big stimulus behind the new legislative changes that are coming?
Thank you. My understanding is the changes were already in the works. The current legislation is quite outdated. It stems from 1994, 95, and 96. So there was definitely a need to update it, and it was undergoing review when those events occurred. So no doubt there was some feedback that went into it at that time. I'm not privy to that information, but I have no doubt that there was likely some feedback that went in.
I jumped the queue. Through the rest of council, Councilor Mondo.
Just in regards to the process, now you mentioned that there's a role for mayor and council to make a decision on E O C or some kind of call that we have to make when an emergency has happened. But I'm curious, and I'm sure you probably have a lot of protocols and plans in place for when certain specific events, if and hopefully never, do occur. So I guess just for clarity for us, what do our staff, are our staff aware when, for example, an earthquake happens and we lose power and maybe transportation routes are affected? Is there an algorithm or something that's followed to, for, that our staff are aware of, of okay, this has occurred, now we need to do this, and then that, and then that?
Through you, Mayor Swain. Thank you. It's a very good question. Part of that will come through further training with your staff. We do have call-out structures for the E O Cs, including call-out numbers. We have an internal call-out app, for lack of a better word, where we would call out certain staff for different levels of activation. In terms of the policy group, elected officials would be notified of an emergency event by an E O C director. So as staff, I'm listed as your emergency coordinator. So a call would come to me, and I would talk to your staff and then get permission to activate an E O C. And then your staff would then be notifying the mayor or his designate. So that would come from the E O C director and then, or information officer, or directly from the mayor. Then the policy group would receive a briefing, either by email or by phone. So there is a defined structure, for sure.
I was just gonna comment on that briefly. The good news is for council, the decision-making is very limited, so things flow smoothly. So staff is, anyways, we don't get in the way, and we let them get their jobs done. And it's only when the big decisions need to be made, we're essentially brought into the loop. So that's my synopsis of all of it. Through the rest of council, any other questions? Councilor Lerner?
Thank you. I just wanted to make the follow-up comment of excellent presentation, and I would share with Mayor Swain's thoughts on pets. Do you actually, if anyone's interested, I can share, there is a St. John Ambulance Emergency Pet First Aid Kit and Course. So I do actually recommend all members of the household be prepared. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just remember all the flooding and down in the States, New Orleans, and all the stuff around animals and pets and stuff. So yeah, it's an important aspect of it. Well, again, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Beauchamp, and to the rest of the R D N team for being here. It's a privilege and honor to have you here this evening in our chambers. So, thank you again. Okay, so we're on to 5 C of our agenda. So we have Mr. Scott Mack, managing partner and registered professional planner at Townsite Planning. He has a PowerPoint presentation for us this evening regarding Harwood Properties Parkland and Alternate Amenity Proposal. So.
Yeah, point of privilege, please. I'll be declaring conflict due to my property being in close proximity. Thank you.
Okay. Through your worship. Disappointed to see that the R D N didn't stay. Apparently they've heard me speak before, so thought they'd better get out when they had the chance. I do want to, first off, I just want to thank council for the opportunity to attend tonight's meeting, particularly in this committee of the whole format. I think I mentioned at my last presentation that I strongly believe that good community development is a function of communication, working together. And so I think this type of format in particular, where it's a little bit less formal, and there's a bit of an opportunity for dialogue, can really help to move these types of projects forward in a positive manner. So just wanted to start with that. Now, more specifically, the reason that I'm here tonight is to talk about the project on behalf of my clients at 6671 and 6685, 6685B Harwood Drive. The subject property you're probably familiar with comprises approximately 11 acres of land and is located at the, essentially at the entrance to the foothills development directly across from Spence's Way. Council approved the rezoning of these properties in October of 2022 to a mix of R1, R2, and R8. And of course, the subject, sorry, the rezoning was subject to a number of development-related conditions and amenity contributions. These commitments were agreed to by council, the previous council, and secured ultimately through registration of Section 219 covenants against the subject properties. The key elements included in those agreements were a cash amenity contribution of $69,000. This contribution was paid prior to adoption of the bylaw, so those monies are now with the district. We also had proposed as an amenity to provide for an improved parking area at the west end of Aldes Road with an estimated value of $30,000, the idea being there that obviously a lot of people use this area to access the Copley Ridge Trails and the parklands and the foothills. And there is at this time no formal or coordinated parking, and so people sort of make do at the edge of the road and find their own parking spots. And so we felt that there may be some benefit, some community benefit to having something a little bit more defined at that location. And then the other key piece was some enhanced landscaping along the frontage of the site on the west side of Harwood Drive and the Harwood Drive Frontage Road, in particular in this case, because of course we're dealing with a bit of a unique situation where we essentially have two parallel roads. And so we've got boulevards, an external boulevard, and then essentially a median or a boulevard between the two roads, which at this point are, you know, primarily a mix of gravel shoulder and a little bit of grass and a whole bunch of blackberries. And so we wanted to sort of improve that area, both for the benefit of the project and for the community as well. The development concept that we provided at the time of rezoning did not contemplate the provision of dedicated parkland, assuming it was approved, and when we did come in for subdivision. And that decision was based on discussions, previous discussions with both the former planner and approving officer, as well as the current approving officer. We understand, of course, since that time, that council has reacquired the decision-making authority on parkland versus cash and lieu, and may in fact wish to see parkland dedicated at this location rather than cash and lieu. Council, the new council, of course, following the election in October, passed a motion at the end of November to advise staff that they did not wish to see the construction of the proposed parking area at the end of Aldes Road, and instead would wish to see either a cash and lieu contribution of those improvements or a potential amenity in some other location. Councilor Jones subsequently placed a recommendation on the January 25th council agenda, which essentially sort of went a little bit further and provided some recommendations around the provision, the potential provision of. around the provision, the potential provision of parkland and some alternative amenities in association with the project. We, of course, attended the, that January twenty-fifth council meeting on behalf of our clients and expressed concern that there had not, at that point, been any consultation with us on the potential changes to the plan and the agreements that had been registered against the property, and requested that the, the item be deferred so that further work and discussion could take place, and that hopefully, potentially, we, we indicated at that time that we weren't necessarily opposed to some of the ideas, but we wanted to have some time to consider how they might impact the development, and so we essentially asked for some additional time to look at that and, and come back hopefully with something that would be suitable and, and preferable for everybody. So, in, in the meantime, following, following January's meeting, we've had obviously discussions between myself and my clients, with staff, Frank and I walked through a foot of snow across the property somewhere around the end of February, I think, and I believe that we've come up with a proposal that will satisfy council's interests and is, is in keeping with Lansville's community character and will produce a project that we can all be proud of. So, I, I just wanted to, a bit of a sidestep here, so in, in reviewing the proposal that Councilor Jones had made, we realized that, that this discussion also dovetails into a discussion that we need to have with council regarding the environmental setbacks that we will need to provide for the drainage course and the, the water that runs through the property, given that a lot of these issues are, you know, are essentially in the same area of the property. That particular element, that those setback requirements would be, will be addressed through a subsequent development permit, but it sort of ties into the discussion tonight. So part of our rezoning application, we did provide a biophysical assessment, which was prepared by a professional biologist. The only significant environmental feature on the property is the man-made drainage that's found along the southern boundary of the site, while man-made, as I've said here on the slide, Mother Nature remains undefeated, and this drainage course obviously has naturalized over time and, and it wouldn't necessarily appear to be man-made if you, if you saw it today. The drainage, as per the terminology used by the biologist in his report, is though essentially a series of ditches and a seasonal dugout, which was created by previous owners in order to manage water on the site when it was being farmed. However, because of this drainage, even though it is only technically a ditch and a, and a dugout, it does ultimately connect to Galloway Marsh, which does drain and connect to fish-bearing waters, therefore the provincial riparian area regulations come into play and have to be considered. And so the report that we did at the rezoning acknowledged that, and the biologist determined that a, a six-meter setback would be, would provide appropriate protection for this drainage. And depending on your familiarity with these processes, typically, obviously there's a very wide range of, of, of water courses and water bodies, generally speaking, the maximum type of setback for a riparian area is, is upwards of thirty meters. Typically, you would only see that applied on a, a very large, very significant water course, such as the Nanaimo River, I believe Bloods Creek may in fact have a thirty-meter setback as well, but certainly it's, you know, it's obviously the significant water courses. Now, there are thousands upon thousands of, of smaller and secondary and tertiary systems that feed into those larger systems, and generally speaking, they have a, a lesser need or are not as great a need for, for protection. And so, again, in this case, the biologist looked at it and determined that a six-meter setback was the appropriate standard. Now, the, the technical issue with that, of course, is that in the Lansville zoning bylaw contains provisions that require, of course, require water courses to be protected, but the requirement in the bylaw at this point indicates that the, the setback must be fifteen meters or as determined by a biologist, whichever is greater. And so in spite of the fact that we have a professional biologist who has suggested that six meters is sufficient, at this point, we are required to address that fifteen-meter setback. And so as a result, in order to make things work better for the development, we would and we will need a, a relaxation of that setback from fifteen meters to six meters. But again, we feel that we have the, the scientific evidence and the, and the report from the biologist that supports that recommendation. So a couple of things I wanted to mention as well, and this is sort of specific, and this, and this would have factored into the biologist's report, obviously, as well. The existing vegetation is obviously sort of critical to the, the, the functioning of that water course, and in this case, generally speaking, the vegetation is, you know, extends out approximately six meters from the, from the drainage, there are areas where it's less, where there's none, there's areas where it extends a little bit further, but generally speaking, it's, you know, fairly consistently around that, that twenty-foot, six-meter mark. Beyond that point into the property is, is, is essentially land that has been previously cleared, was previously farmed, and at this point is primarily, you know, grassed and, and yard area. The other thing I wanted to mention as well is that biologists always advise that when it comes to protecting water courses, the protection of the setback area and of the vegetation is particularly critical on the, on the south side of the water. And the reason for that is because the vegetation provides a critical function in maintaining water temperature, and of course, given our location on the earth, the sun is generally to the south of us, and so having that protection on the south side is, both are important, but it's even more so important on the south side. And so that's where we, we were fortunate, given the location of this particular feature and given the way that the project played out, that while we are requesting a six-meter setback on the north side of the drainage, we are in fact able to significantly exceed that requirement for significant portions of the south side, where it is going to be, in fact, more beneficial. So as I've said here, portions of that, that protected area on the south side of the drainage will be up to twenty-two meters wide before we get to the, the private property to the south, which contains the, the BC Hydro right-of-way and the Fortis, the Fortis BC right-of-way, which of course is wide open because it needs to be for those, for those utilities. And so, a, a, again, just given the relationship between this particular issue and some of the points raised in Councilor Jones's motion, we felt it was important to essentially combine those two and, and address all of this in our presentation tonight. So, the, the proposal, the, the meat and potatoes. Firstly, you will notice that we have, in consultation with the owners, developed a name for the project, which at this point we're calling Copley Commons. We felt it was particularly appropriate, obviously Copley is a, is a fairly well-used name in the Lansville community for, for good reason, but we felt it was particularly appropriate on this project, given that these two properties form a, a critical piece of the original Copley Farm. And so, part of, part of the reason, again, for the name as well, was we, we felt it sort of helps to bring the project to life and, and people can start to see how it can be integrated into the community. The term commons means the cultural and natural resources that are accessible to all members of the society, including natural materials such as air, water and inhabitable earth. And again, given the discussion tonight in particular around green space and environmental protection and water courses, we felt that the terminology was, was, was quite appropriate in this instance. So, in, in, in short, as suggested in Councilor Jones's motion, we have been able to and we believe that it is viable to provide for park dedication in the form of a greenway along the southern boundary of the site. Councilor Jones's recommendation had suggested a six-meter-wide corridor, which would essentially equal the five percent that the, that the district is entitled to require as a condition of subdivision. This, our suggestion, of course, would be named the Copley Farm Greenway. In reviewing the boundaries of the greenway in conjunction with the environmental setbacks, we realized there was an opportunity to increase the amount of dedicated parkland, particularly in the eastern portion of the site, which would increase the park dedication by approximately thirty percent to six-point-five percent of the site. As a result of the change, the dedicated park and greenway will now range with between six and up to fifteen meters, and will, in terms of overall width, will be, you know, closer to thirty and up to forty-five meters in some areas at the east end of the site when we take the environmental setback areas into account. So finally, something to see, and I do, on a, on a couple of later slides, I, I zoom into a couple of key areas here, so if there's, if there's detail you wanna see, it, it might come up a little bit better on, on subsequent slides, but in, in essence, the overall concept is, is similar to what you may have seen, certainly at the rezoning stage. We have twenty proposed bareland strata lots, which range in size from a third up to a little bit more than a half of an acre, based on the R1 and R2 zoning. We have a small patio home site, which is the R8 zoning at the southeast corner of the site, at the entrance to the site, and then you can see, hopefully, along the southern boundary, I'll move from west to east, so obviously, so for the first approximately sixty percent of the corridor, it is at that six-meter width, and then it obviously widens out, there's no cursor here, but that's fine. Hopefully, you can see there is a, from, moving up from the southern boundary into that eastern area where all the trees and the vegetation, the water are, you can see the park designation and then the park boundary would actually be just to the north of that, the heavy black line, and then the area north of that would be the environmental setbacks on either side of the, of the drainage course and the dugout. So, going into the, the, the greenway concept, just a little bit further here, the existing driveway for sixty-six-seventy-one Harwood is located right along the southern boundary of the property, apparently, or sorry, essentially it, it runs parallel to the, to the private driveway to the south that's within the Hydro right-of-way. You can probably see it if you've walked that portion of the Hydro right-of-way, and it would be, you know, to, it basically extends up about halfway into the site before it turns into the property to access the house, and so that, the entire extent of that driveway would be located within the park dedication, and so this section of the park would only require minimal op, minimal upgrades to essentially convert that driveway to a, to a pedestrian trail. Almost in the entire east half of the, of the greenway has an existing mature forest canopy, there's a few small sort of peek-a-boo gaps where you can get a little bit of sunlight in, but for the most part, there's, there's a lot of existing mature vegetation. And then we would also propose to provide interpretive signage along the greenway that could provide information regarding the surrounding environment, obviously about the history of the property as well, as well as a couple of benches potentially, in order to provide people, places for people to stop and take a break, that would be the logical spot, obviously, to put some of the interpretive signage as well. So here, zoomed in a little bit better, so on to essentially the east half, I'll speak to the arrows just in a minute, they relate to the, to the next slide, but hopefully now, yeah, you can see a little bit better where the approximate park boundary would be in that eastern half, essentially sort of paralleling the boundaries of the drainage. Again, there's a lot of mature vegetation within that area, what you see there is the, fairly close to the existing alignment of the driveway, which again would become the trail through that parkland, and then the two yellow areas you see there are the two next slides, which are just photos, so the first, I believe the first photo is the arrow on the right, so looking from the frontage road into the property, so essentially the s, the potential start of the trail, or very close to it potentially, and then the second photo, the second slide, will be looking from, from west to east, back towards Harwood Drive. So here again, from the Harwood Drive Frontage Road, this is the existing driveway, whether, whether the trail ends up exactly at this location or shifted slightly, essentially it would start somewhere in, in, in proximity to the southern boundary of the property at the southeast corner of the property, and again, the idea would be, again, if it was here, some type of infrastructure to prevent, you know, quads and motorbikes from flying up, if there's people walking the trail, a sign to, you know, announce the name, announce the arrival of the trail, and then again, some, some modest upgrades to the, to the driveway surface, just to convert it to a permeable path. And then here, and again, speaking to the, the existing mature vegetation, it's interesting, it's amazing actually how different it is, you know, essentially, so again, we're looking east here, so to the right is the Hydro right-of-way, which of course you can sort of start to see, you sort of get a sense of, because it's much brighter in behind those trees, but it's amazing how relatively close it is, yet, you know, how much nicer it is, you know, not, not very far away, because of course the Hydro right-of-way is not a, a particularly endearing location with the, with the power lines and the, and the blackberries, and so certainly this is from a, from a pedestrian, from a hiker standpoint, this is a much nicer environment. And so then on the west side, just a, a couple of quick points here, so the driveway, like I said, turns into the property, and so at that point, we would need to then construct a new trail from that point then to the western end of the site. The, the idea would be to try and meander that, six meters is a, is a, is a fairly comfortable width for a trail, it can certainly be accommodated in less, but the benefit of six is, of course, that it provides opportunities to, A, potentially protect more mature vegetation, which there is still some on this portion of the trail, as well as to meander the trail, which also, again, helps to protect the trees, because we can sort of work around them. There is, I, I would, I would suggest at this point, about half of that western half has an existing tree canopy, there are groupings of trees along that half, but we would be prepared to augment that at the time of development and, and plant trees that would help to enhance that canopy over time as well. So here again, a bit of a zoom in on the concept with an arrow, again, showing the location for the next slide, which will be looking from east to west along that six-meter corridor. So there you can see here, so again, on the left is the BC Hydro right-of-way, and then within, obviously within the central portion of the image, the six-meter corridor, which as you can see, you know, in this, in this particular section of it contains a, a fair number of mature trees. On initial review, we believe that we would likely be able to construct a trail without having to remove any trees, that would be the, the, the goal, the aim. Certainly some, and you know, in this area in particular, there's some that, that would probably need to be limbed up in order to get the trail through, but at, at worst, I would suspect there's, there's probably no more than about a half a dozen trees that might need to be removed ultimately, which is certainly beneficial from our perspective. So just quickly, I'm, I'm getting closer to the end here, just a couple of slides, a couple of points about the environmental setback and tree protection. As noted, we would propose to provide for an environmental protection covenanted area on the north side of the drainage, which would be six meters wide, that environmental setback would be fenced with what is a fairly standard in, a form of environmental fencing, a post and rail fence. The benefit to that is that the people that back onto those properties still get the benefit of being able to view those areas, because of course that's one of the, that would be one of the most desirable features of those lots, is that they back onto this nice green space, and so a lot of people in these circumstances obviously would prefer not to have a, a six-foot cedar fence that, that blocks the view of, of, you know, what is really one of the most appealing elements of the property. And each lot, which are the, and again, this is fairly standard practice in the industry, each lot would have a, a placard installed on that fence to identify that it's environmentally sensitive area, and of course, that portion of the lot that they own, that is protected, would have a covenant registered against it, so that each of those owners would have an understanding of what, what the covenant means and why it's important that they not disturb or, or damage or destroy those areas. In addition to that, we did commit at the rezoning stage as well to, to provide for a measure of tree protection over and above what would be protected within the environmental setbacks, and so what we're suggesting is to create a, a buffer along the western and northern boundaries of the site. Our suggestion would be that it would vary in width, but generally it would average about six meters, and that variation would be dependent upon a more detailed survey at the time of development to look at where are specific trees, and if there's a tree, you know, we could draw the line at six, but of course we'll end up with a, a great tree that was at six-point-seven-five, that, you know, that, that ends up outside, and it, and it might stay, but it, it wouldn't have that protection, right? So if there's areas where we can reduce it a bit, and conversely, then increase it to where it's more valuable, but again, the idea would be to maintain or provide for that, for that average width of six meters. So here, just again, a couple of images, so here's, I didn't provide a directional indicator here, but essentially we're, so on the left side of the larger image is the, the drainage course, so we're sort of looking at that, that larger block of park and environmental setback area, and the, the drainage, of course, is, is setback well into that, into that vegetation, and so what I've shown here is the yellow line is the, would be the, the approximate six-meter boundary, so as you can see, from an environmental standpoint, again, anything beyond that point, there's not, there's not really, for the most part, any existing vegetation beyond that six-meter point that would be protected by extending it any further than the six meters. And there again, just an image of a, of a fairly typical or standard, similar environmental protection fence that would be used in this instance as well. And then here, I just highlighted, I've sort of bolded the, the black line, just showing that variable width corridor along the northern and, and western boundaries of the site in order to... um in order to uh provide for vegetation protection at the rear of those lots. And then here, just wanted to use this as a as a great example, because it's essentially across the street. Uh, the lots on Spence's Way, um, you know, are a great example of where, you know, pockets of existing mature vegetation were able uh to be maintained and protected, and while some owners ultimately took out um uh more or some of those trees, um, there's a, there's a fair number of 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 these groupings that uh hopefully will remain viable over time. And that I just wanted to mention as well, I, because I think it's really important, the the owners in this case um are are all all three are Lanceville residents, all three couples uh live on the property um at present, and in the case of two of them have lived there for a very long time. Uh, one a little bit more recent, but they're they're certainly um 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 happy to resign in Lanceville. Uh, their desire is to either remain in their existing homes or potentially build on uh on one of the new lots, um, if the development proceeds. Um, and so they're, they're looking at this under the lens of, you know, what what type of neighborhood do they do they want to live in as well? And so their goal, you know, even over and above the 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 required or the defined tree protection areas, uh, their goal is to to work with the site and try and find as much opportunity to retain existing vegetation, because they see the value in that, both for the development as well as for themselves as as residents. Uh, finally, um, there was also a request or a suggestion that the parking improvements be uh relocated from uh the west end of Aldes Road to the Harwood uh Drive Frontage Road. Um, we've, we have reviewed that and believe that that is feasible as well. Um, essentially to be located within the um, be on the east side of the frontage road, so between the frontage road and uh the main portion of Harwood Drive. Um, the parking area, we would propose to be permeable in order to minimize environmental impact. And here, just uh very roughly, you can sort of see an illustrative concept of what approximately the location and 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 approximately what that would look like. Essentially, standing at the end of the frontage road, looking north. So in summary, uh, the revised proposal um is is essentially this, it's sixty-nine thousand dollars in 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 a in a cash community amenity contribution, which as I stated, has already been provided. Um, six and a half percent uh park dedication, uh, which is more than the legislative requirement. Uh, seven and a half percent of the site would be uh protected through an environmental covenant based on the six meter setback uh and include environmental fencing. Uh, ten percent of the site uh would be uh would have a tree protection covenant um over and above or outside of the environmental setback areas. Uh, we propose to construct the, essentially construct the Copley Farm Greenway, uh, which will include four hundred meters of new public trail, interpretive signage, benches and trees to augment augment the existing tree canopy. Um, and of course, the improved parking area uh on the Harwood Drive Frontage Road. Uh, I wanted to mention as well, just because, and again, because it all, it all relates to the overall project. Um, uh, in addition to the to the amenities noted, uh, the owners have already previously committed. Uh, this was part of what we offered with the original rezoning application um to require, and this is now included in the covenant, uh, to ensure that each resident, each residential unit will be solar ready. Um, each residential unit will be provided with a an electric vehicle plugin. Uh, each unit will uh be required to adhere to and implement fire smart guidelines. And all landscaping areas completed as part of the subdivision will be completed with uh drought-resistant plantings, uh, which is commonly referred to as zeroscaping, and and drip irrigation system, which again is far more efficient. In closing, uh, in in summary, we believe uh that in considering council's original motion from November of twenty-two, as well as the follow-up motion from January of twenty-two, that we have come up with a a real win-win solution. Uh, our request, um, acknowledging that this is the committee whole uh would be that the committee endorse this alternative proposal uh as well as the amenities and proposals and recommend that council support a development permit that includes a six meter setback um on the north side of the drainage, as per the recommendations from the biologist. Uh, endorsement of this plan will allow us to proceed with submission of our formal D P requirement, which will, of course, formalize all of these environmental conditions, uh, as well as to submit an application for subdivision, which will allow us to proceed with detailed design. Thank you for your time. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, thank you for your presentation. Through to council. Councilor Lerner.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I'm sure a lot of work went into that. Uh, it's got a a lot of information. I appreciate the um, a moving of the parking lot to the uh Harwood area. Uh, I think the fact that it connects to the proposed new trail is nice, because then people can use that trail to connect to the existing one. And I appreciate the inclusion of permeable surfaces and all of that. Um, as far as the six meter setback, I I I'm not personally familiar with the biologist's report, but I appreciate you referring to that. Um, I had a couple of quick questions. One was with regard to the signage that would be installed. Uh, would there be an openness to consulting with the local First Nations on potential history and naming with regard to the environment and biology? I've seen some communities do that. Uh, and my second question, I know it wasn't part of this particular presentation, but uh, the lighting in the area, the street lighting. Uh, I know that, for example, the Spences Way that was referenced, I'm not sure if it has any street lighting, the foothills has relatively minimal street lighting, so it protects sort of the night sky uh atmosphere there, and I'm wondering if there's been consideration of that and the the Strata Road as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, through your worship to Councilor Lerner. Um, in response to your first question, I think certainly from our perspective, we would have no no concerns whatsoever with um consulting. Obviously, we would work with the district on any sort of signage or naming uh plan um and the details uh related to that, and and if there's a desire to um include the local First Nations in that discussion as well, I I don't think we would have any concerns with that at all. Um, in regards to your second question, we've had a a little bit of discussion about street lighting. Um, and and it, and of course, it relates a little bit to the fact that this is a proposed to be a strata development rather than a uh a public road. And so typically, with a strata development, that opens up the opportunity to to utilize different or alternative standards rather than uh, you know, on public roads, there is a a stock or a default municipal standard that that typically gets used. Um, at this point, I, we, we don't have any sort of set notions on exactly what we would prefer to see, whether we would prefer to see lighting or not. Um, I would suggest that if there was going to be lighting, it would, it would be uh, the effort would be made to minimize it as much as possible. Um, and certainly, yeah, with, you know, with dark sky principles being uh uh a key sort of priority or a key principle um to ensure that, yeah, if there's going to be lighting, that it is it is, yeah, very minimal to, in order to not negatively impact the um sort of the semi-rural landscape.
Excellent. Thank you. I look forward to hearing what the rest of council uh has to think about this. Thank.
Hey, uh, everyone wants to go next, or I can go? Okay, I just had a real quick question. Um, so obviously, this is a strata development, uh, so through to Mr. Mack. Um, with the recent announcement of the and E B's changes uh with respect to um, you know, being able to do um up to four units of housing on one lot. Does the strata development protect against uh having that happen? So are are all these lots immune from essentially having a triplex or or fourplex or whatever put on any of these properties? I'm just curious if you have examined that.
Thank you, worship. Uh, that's a, that's a very good question, and I, and I have give that, given that some thought, of course, you know, the uh, the clients that I have, the projects that I'm working on, obviously, many of them are potentially impacted uh by the recent uh announcements by the by the province. Um, and this this site obviously is one of those. Um, the 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 short answer is, is I don't know. Uh, at this stage, you know, I think there's still more um, more questions than answers as to how, you know, if the province is going to roll out this, you know, four units on every lot. Clearly, there are, you know, there are implications and and, you know, you know, regulations and all sorts of issues that are going to come into play um that will potentially influence that, right? And and as an example, properties that are are managed by a strata are are a great example of that. Um, and so in the absence of anything that prevents it, then I would suggest that potentially a strata council, um, which of course initially would be the developer, you know, and that diminishes as they sell the lots. Um, in the absence of any new regulations, they, the strata could potentially restrict it to single homes only. Of course, the province may, as part of their regulations, when they roll them out, they may include uh amendments to the Strata Property Act that would preclude that, just as they've made recent changes around uh rentals in strata units, right? So it's, I I could, quite frankly, I could see it going either way um at this point, but I think the, obviously, there's a lot of people that are very interested to see um how this is going to be rolled out.
Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, you know, and the reason, reason why I'm bringing that up is, and you brought up in your presentation or made comment to it is, you know, with respect to the owners that currently reside up on those properties, you know, it's the type of neighborhood that they want to live in. And and what I see that as being a threat to is of all of a sudden, you're in this neighborhood, and I, and I actually quite liked uh what I saw this evening. Um, a master planned, basically, development or neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, it's turned upside down, because you have, you know, and I'm not against duplexes or triplexes or what have you, but all of a sudden, that could be a real reality in that in that neighborhood and can completely upset it. And uh, and the solubility and the desirability of it, so maybe, again, that's just just an observation, and and it's, um, Mr. Limshu, looks like you might have something to and, because I think we're all left guessing right now what's going to eventually roll out in the fall, and and it's troubling, actually.
Yeah, your worship through the council, um, I would concur with um the comments made by uh Mr. Mack with respect to the impact, the potential impacts on on strata. If the act stays as is, the Strata Property Act, um, there are certain things that definitely require the approval of the strata. One of them is, you know, any of, any um changes that may impact the unit, the unit apport- um, apportionment uh throughout that strata development. For example, you know, if we start with twenty units today, they can't simply, someone can't simply come along and say, well, I want to do twenty-one without first getting um the the strata corporation to agree, because that has an impact on the strata fees and the way they've apportioned the the cost associated with that strata, so um, having said all that, and I think Scott alluded to it, is, you know, if the province does take the extra step and amends the um, the Strata Property Act uh to take that into account, then, you know, it's, it's kind of a new ballgame. But if everything stays as is under the act, um, the strata does still have the authority to uh to grant approvals on any change to the actual strata itself.
Yeah, okay, again, thank you for that. And and again, just with the whole strata thing, then, you know, I see that as being a loophole around maybe the future amendments in terms of, uh, you know, still having control over the look and feel of some of these master planned neighborhoods and communities, but um, go ahead, Mr. Mack.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, if I can, I I I think, you know, when you look back uh after, uh, after Mr. E B initially came into power, and I think, I believe the initial announcement, A, was three units, and B, uh, it was, it was um it was talked about in relation to major urban centers. And so, you know, at that, at that time, the discussion was, okay, Vancouver, Victoria are obvious. Most likely, Kelowna and Animo, Kamloops, Prince George, but probably nothing beyond that, right? And I think when you look at the impacts of density and and especially at at this scale with three and four units on each lot, you know, the idea of that in those larger urban centers, from a planning perspective, I think is a bit of a no-brainer, but it becomes obviously a little more difficult as you get into smaller centers that don't necessarily have the same level of resources, don't have the same services, don't have the same infrastructure. And so I think there was a lot of surprise. I mean, one, that the 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 number went up. Uh, but I think more so that the, that all of a sudden now this is, it sounds like it's being rolled out province-wide. Um, and so, because, yeah, I, the implications for smaller municipalities are significantly greater than they are for the, I mean, Victoria was already going down that road. You know, Vancouver's been talking about it for years. They were already headed in that direction anyways, right? So this is, this is just business as usual for them, but for smaller communities, it's a very different story.
And my apologies, I didn't, I wasn't trying to derail the conversation with the the proposed changes, but again, uh, my thoughts are, you know, I like what I'm seeing, so I'll just leave it at that for now, but uh I think Counselor Mendel and then Counselor Jones.
Um, yeah, just a question, a couple of questions about the setback. Um, for one thing, the biologist's report, is that available for council to take a look at?
Yeah, through your worship to Counselor Mendel, uh, it is, it was provided with the uh with the rezoning application, if for some reason, I can certainly provide it again. Uh, and it would, um, obviously, the details of that would come forward as well in the, you know, in the 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 development permit application that we still need to submit, that actually formally requests that um, six meters, so like, like I said, hopefully, hopefully, it was clearly, obviously, we acknowledge that council can't uh formally um grant uh that variance at this point without without uh having actually even seen an application, but um, we wanted to sort of, you know, essentially plant the seed and um and get some preliminary feedback.
Okay, so my follow-up question just is that in your uh original submission then, um, was the six meter setback factored in, or is that a new change?
No, it's, we, uh, well, if anything, sorry, we did make one small change. Um, the biologist, when he initially did his report, um, had set it at five meters. Um, and then he had to go back out at some point to look at something and then realize something and came back and realized that when he, there's a, the province has a um um, what's the term I'm looking for? Uh, a a protocol, a a process by which, that it, that every biologist has to follow when they do these assessments. Um, a methodology, thank you. Um, and so, so in order to maintain consistency, right? So the idea, of course, is that no matter which biologist goes up to do this, to do this assessment, hopefully, they're all going to come up with the same result, because they're all following the same methodology. And so he discovered something different when he went out for the second time, and so he made the adjustment from five meters to six meters. But the six meters was always, has always been accounted for, five or six meters has always been accounted for in the in the in the development concept.
Okay, so that's not like you're really requesting a change, you just want what you're.
Essentially, it would be the, ultimately, it would be the formalization of of what we've always contemplated, correct?
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you for not just the presentation, but thank you for the time and effort that you've put into it. Obviously, having discussions with with the owners um about the concerns that that we had and the um, thoughts we had going forward, so um a couple of questions, just looking at some details, because I'd just like to understand things a little further. Um, old ditch system from the farms and a dugout to deal with some overflow waters, I I gather what you're um seeing in this old seasonal drainage course area um with what I gather is a pipe to take um outflow uh to the marsh, uh, which, as you mentioned, is a protected area. So the two questions I have about that are how is this seasonal drainage course area going to be utilized to serve the developed area as opposed to what it's currently doing? So I gather there are perimeter pipes around all of the lots and that they need to go somewhere, and maybe they end up going here, I I don't know. And how do you assess the increased runoff that you've that you um anticipate will go into this system? And how do you assess what comes out now and in the future?
Yeah, no, those are, those are great questions, uh, through your, your worship um to Counselor Jones. Um, so of course, we haven't dug that deep into the the real fine details of that. Uh, but but all of those issues um are addressed in in very fine detail at the subdivision stage. But I could certainly speak in general terms to what the, what the approach would be. Um, uh, generally speaking, obviously, from a stormwater management perspective, in order to utilize natural features such as this, um, you know, the property needs to drain to those features, and not all of this site drains um to this area, and so, so potentially, there are s- relatively smaller portions of the site that might drain towards this, and that would potentially factor into an overall design, both from a a water quality as well as a water quantity standpoint. Um, essentially, and this is, this has been industry standard for many years now. Um, with all developments, there is essentially a requirement that uh, there will be a calculation done by the engineer to determine how much water is currently leaving the site. And essentially, the requirement is post-development, so once the roads are built, the houses, the driveways, all the impermeable surfaces, um, which are now no longer going to allow for the natural infiltration of water, you essentially have to make up for that, so that following development, no more water is leaving the site than was before you started on the site. Um, and so, and that's done through a a variety of different means. Um, one of the likely requirements, and and they are likely to work well, they're still subject to a soils assessment, but based on what we know, we would anticipate the rock pits, um, individual rock pits on each lot should work well, so things like perimeter drains and roof leaders can potentially be directed to those rock pits, which allows for the the vast majority of that water to be slowly, you know, infiltrated back into the ground. Um, and there's an overflow built into those, so that you, when you get that one in fifty or one in a hundred year flood event, it fills up and then it overflows into a piped system. Uh, but you're not just dumping everything directly into a piped system, you're you're putting as much of the water back into the into the ground as possible. And obviously, that's more challenging when you're on a a postage stamp, three hundred and fifty square meter lot in Animo, uh, but when you've got a third of an acre and a half an acre, again, assuming that the soils are suitable, which generally they are unless it's solid rock, which we don't. which generally they are unless it's solid rock, which we don't believe is the case here, then then the rock pits should be a very viable part of the overall stormwater management strategy. But again, it's, yeah, it's really focused on both those critical elements, both the water quantity as well as the water quality. And in particularly, in a case like this where it is directly flowing, a portion of the site directly flows into into an already protected environmentally sensitive area. That water quality component is a is a key piece of it as well.
Thank you, that's interesting. And I wanted to understand a little bit more about rock pits, if you don't mind. Because I understand that that is a good solution. I, in my mind, imagine a rock pit to be something like the 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 area below and a septic field, to be something like a septic field. Am I right about that?
You're, you're, yeah, it's not dissimilar, generally speaking, and it and it depends on the calculations that the engineer does at the end of the day. But in terms of sizing, but quite commonly, what you'll see would be an area, probably about an area about the size of the carpeted area between me and the council table. It'll be about two or three feet below grade. So you'll have, you know, backfill and topsoil on top of it. So you, so you won't know that it's there except for there's typically a catch basin or some type of filter access. But then it's, it depends, it depends on a variety of things. But in some cases, it's larger, sort of almost like riprap stone, which of course, when you load that all in, there you end up with all these gaps in between, which allows for storage of the water. In some cases, it's it's like drain rock, which of course provides the same functions, just a slightly different material. And then there's a filter cloth wrapping around it to protect that material so that you don't get, you know, because obviously, if you didn't have that, the dirt would eventually infiltrate and clog that up. And then, like I said, there's an, there's an inlet from the, from the the roof leaders and or the perimeter drains. And then a catch basin or a drain system that would allow for overflow into a a pipe system in the event of a of a major storm event.
Thank you. Is there an area in Lanceville now, either a couple that are under development that I think have rock pits? I'm not sure. So when I drive by, I look and I'm like, hmm, what point am I going to see the rock pit? So for example, on Dickinson Road, the development going in near the end there, would I expect to see the rock pits at some point that have been built? When do they go in? Like, it's already been graded, the road's been done, that's been done up there. Are the rock pits in or do they go in now and pull out soil and put in a rock pit? How does that work? I see, Director Limshu, don't answer my question here.
Your worship to the council, typically, the rock pits are installed at a time of building. You know, some some jurisdictions will have plans that identified location of the rock pits. But the the thing is, when the lots are as big as we're talking, you and I might think, well, this is an appropriate, this is an appropriate building site. But the the end user may think differently. And so generally speaking, you want the the rock pit to be installed at a time of construction because it ties in nicely with the house and the designer, both the designer and engineers can work together to make sure that the pit is is an appropriate location to service the house. You know, the last thing you want is to have your pit above the house where you're pumping.
Thank you. So that answered my question, which is which stage of development they went in. So I know when to look for them now. Sorry, I've got quite a few questions here, but the other one is just a pretty quick one. You talked about post-development runoff, not exceeding pre-development runoff. So at what point do you start taking those measurements and and where so that you have your comparisons?
So through your worship to Counselor Jones, the 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 two sort of big steps, the two next steps for this project and for any project, once rezoning has been approved, is to apply for subdivision and apply for development permit. And so in this case, once we had a development permit and a subdivision PSR, which is essentially the preliminary or tentative approval for that subdivision, that essentially, the the PSR is essentially the the shopping list of requirements that the developer must provide and build and do in order to get final approval and registration of lots. And so one of those requirements will be, amongst many others, will be, you know, detailed engineering for the site, you know, detailed plans, a storm, a comprehensive stormwater management plan. So that would all come in as part of that civil package, as part of the overall design for the for the works and for the infrastructure that would be part of the project.
Thank you. Trails, I really appreciate that the trails, where possible, are meandering. It's always struck me as rather odd that something gets called a trail and you look at it and it's straight ahead asphalt. Not really my idea of what a trail is. So thank you in advance for meandering whenever possible to make that visual appeal and for the permeable surface. It's much appreciated. You probably know that I raised a question regarding rainwater harvesting and cisterns. And it's a difficult one because mandating that throughout Lanceville just in many ways doesn't make sense. So there was a motion where it said mandating where feasible, which was meant to provide that flexibility. At the same time, it's very difficult to install after development. So, you know, I've looked at my own property and I just don't have a place where I can dig a tank in the ground. And I don't even have a place where I can put it above the ground unless I want to, you know, stick it in my vegetable garden. The logical time to do it is when the building is going on. And you're, you know, dig in, like, we have some neighbors at the end of Huddlestone there that have been rebuilding a house. I don't know if you've seen it, but they've put in a couple of simple cisterns and a rainwater catchment over the roof. And total cost to them, they estimated to be about $8,000, which is, which is nice and low. I think that sounds pretty low, not certainly way below what would be required if you were using it for potable water. So my question to you, it's obviously not in our bylaws, at least not at the moment. But is it something that you would take to the owners, to the future buyers, to provide as an option to install a rainwater harvesting system? I I would hope at the moment I don't need to go into the reasons why. This is a smart thing to do, given where we're going in the future. But would you be open to that and potentially there being, you know, something like a pilot project for Lanceville here with this, which would be, you know, something that can be, you know, communicated with other with other peoples who may also be looking at that and not know how successful it is or what the cost is and when it should be done and all that.
Thank you for the question through your worship to Counselor Jones. I'm certainly certainly more than happy to to take that back and have that conversation with my clients. Obviously, I I don't feel comfortable making that commitment on their behalf at this point. But I I think they would certainly be willing to engage in the conversation. And then obviously, then it just becomes a question of of logistics and how to make that work. I think there's potential that it could sort of factor into that stormwater management design. You know, as an example, maybe it provides for an opportunity for the rock pit to be a little bit smaller because we essentially have alternative capacity and storage elsewhere on on the property. Or perhaps it's part of an inline system, it goes through the cistern first and and then overflows. Or I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, but I I think it's a possibility. And then I think, you know, from a, from a development perspective, I think the logical, you know, just as with the rock pits, the logical time would be to see that constructed at the time of of building permit. So there would be a covenant that as part of that stormwater management system would potentially deal with that requirement for cistern as well. The only, the only comment I wanted to say on this, and and an engineer would be better able to answer this than I am. But obviously, the the patio home site is a little bit tighter. And so it might be a little more challenging. So it might be something where where perhaps we come back with a proposal that would apply to the single family lots and and maybe not to the patio home site. But I'm certainly happy to have that conversation with my clients.
Thank you.
And and we would then bring them back when we come back with the development permit application because it'll come to council, so.
That would be wonderful. I look forward to that. I also noted that about patio homes and thought, hmm, probably not as feasible, but maybe we'd be surprised. The RDN's got a lot on their website on rainwater harvesting cisterns and putting them in and the overflows and whatnot. So that's about as far as my knowledge has gotten in terms of construction. This last one is a little bit a discussion that I haven't heard come to this community, although I have certainly heard a lot of it in other communities. And it does speak a little strongly to climate change and the fact that about 30% of our methane emissions are coming from natural gas. And so there are developments in other communities that are refusing to install natural gas now. And I'm wondering if that is a discussion that you have had, if you have an opinion on that or where you see that going.
And I thank you again through your worship to Counselor Jones. That's that's not an item that we have discussed. I am certainly aware that there are communities that are, that seem to be moving in that direction, moving in that towards those ideas. And so again, I'm I'm happy to have that conversation with my clients and and see if there's potentially something we could look at and then bring that back again as part of the development permit application. If it's, if if from their perspective, it's it's a feasible alternative.
Thank you. All these considerations that, you know, have to do with with, well, a lot of them around climate change issues. They potentially speak to a really progressive development plan here that I I think could be of interest not just to other Lanceville developments, but further afield. So I appreciate that you have those discussions and moving along with that kind of thinking, I think, is potentially beneficial in in many ways. So thank you.
Counselor Mendel?
So just in looking at the, I think you've been calling it a dugout. And just in regards to the six meter setback, what are the risks for the, either maybe the strata, and maybe this is a question for Director Limshu, or for the district? If we approve a six meter setback versus the 15 and let's say SL 18 or SL 19 on on this map, floods is affected by runoff and floods, that property. What are, what are the, what are the risks because we've reduced that setback to either us, the community, or the strata who?
I I'll I'll take a stab at it through your worship to Counselor Mendel. From my perspective and in my experience, the the risk doesn't change in any way. Regardless of, I mean, the setback is is, you know, it's it's a line on a piece of paper. It'll be a fence in the ground. But at the end of the day, the the dugout is at the level that it's at. And the houses are going to be built at a at a level that accounts for any potential flooding, regardless of what that setback is, whether there's no setback, six meters, 15 meters. So really, I I don't think it has any bearing at the end of the day. And so, and again, just going back to my previous point, yeah, in the event that somehow in a one and 200 year event, the the dugout, the the waterway was inundated and and overflowed, that will be a requirement at the time of building permit on any of those lots that are in proximity to that drainage to, they will be required, just as you're required to do when you build a house on the waterfront, to establish a flood construction level. And that flood construction level has to take into account a variety of of factors, not the least of which is climate change over a very long period of time to ensure that even in that absolute worst case scenario, those houses would be above the, sort of the the furthest extents of 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 what might be flooded in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, through the, through the council, any additional questions? Okay, Counselor Lerner?
Yes, thank you. I just had one question with regard to the, I guess it would be the bottom southeast corner of the, that you see on the screen there with the existing trail, which I believe connects up Spence's Way and Harwood. And is there plans that this could somehow for for the public connect through to the new Copley Farm Greenway plan? Or would it just connect through the Harwood Drive Road?
So your worship through to Counselor Lerner, I'm not, I'm not entirely clear on the the scope of your question.
Oh, sorry, the, on the 2019 plan, it referenced the existing asphalt trail network that is on Harwood Drive. And I'm curious if if this would be designed to connect to that? I assume it's connecting towards the parking lot. Is that, is that the plan that would connect to the parking lot or would there be additional connection to the existing trail?
So, yeah, fair question. So at this point, we haven't contemplated a, well, a couple of things. There is the existing paved pathway on the east side of Harwood. Obviously, that could be accessed, you know, the the closest point of access, I guess, would be to cross at the intersection with Spence's Way. At this point, and and again, keeping in mind that this is a conceptual plan, we haven't contemplated any specific pedestrian features on the Harwood Drive frontage road. And part of the reason for that is just given the very low volume, obviously, that's going to be on that, you know, very secondary, really, it's almost more like a driveway or an access. And so from our perspective, we we think at this point that it's reasonable that that could be a shared shared travel area between pedestrians and vehicles. You know, the portion to the north of Spence's Way, which you can sort of see up in the top right corner of the drawing, really effectively, that's going to be just a driveway for the one property that's to the north. And that's the only purpose it's going to serve. We had talked to those owners about potentially relocating their driveway because they currently access that frontage road. It extends a little further, obviously, beyond the drawing here. But their preference was to maintain, because originally, we'd actually suggested eliminating the frontage road because it really, it doesn't serve a lot of purpose and it serves arguably less purpose once this development goes in. And the the owner of the property to the north, who again, has an existing driveway, indicated they had some concerns with that, their preference was to maintain it as is. And of course, we still would have had to deal with property owners to the south that sort of live up up into the trees on the on the hill there that access their properties via the hydro right away and come onto the frontage road at the south end. But we had looked at potentially eliminating the frontage road altogether. But but certainly, again, we believe that would be a very low volume. Having said that, that's a, that's sort of, that's sort of the detail would be addressed at the subdivision stage. And that would be a discussion between us and and staff and engineering to determine whether there's a, whether there's a need or not to get something from the end of the trail up to that intersection.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just wanted to point that out because it's something that I believe connecting our trail network is is a preferable thing to do, potentially a low cost way to encourage active transport, active modes of transportation, as they call it, throughout Lanceville. So thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Counselor Jones.
Thanks, Counselor Lerner, for bringing that up. I don't know how I missed that one. But yes, looking at trail networks throughout Lanceville is, is, I believe it's a high priority of this counselor on our priorities anyway. So I do want to point out that the east side of that trail, just hopping across the road there, you connect with the trail that goes along the marsh behind the new houses on Spence's Way. So that will be a very logical, you know, connection for people who are biking or walking. And then you can go behind the houses on Spence's Way, you can keep going and actually go through to the subdivisions, to the houses, you know, further along there. So that's excellent. And assuming obviously that this, the other end of the trail goes, connects on to the Copley Ridge Trails or the, you know, the the wide path that's there already that we zoom along on our bikes, whatever you call it. So I think this is something that you've clearly thought about and thank you for looking at the bigger picture.
Okay, any further questions? All right, so in terms of next steps, and maybe this is through to staff, there are no suggested motions in the agenda. So with respect to advancing this forward, and I see this as being a couple of things, I don't know if it's a variance that's going to have, we have to go forward as a variance first with respect to the setbacks or, but I'll leave it maybe to you, Director Limshu, to give us some next step guidance.
Yeah, I think, you know, if council's supportive of the concept that's being presented tonight, certainly a recommendation from the committee at the whole two council is is appropriate. Certainly, if if the committee feels that a relaxation of the the setback for the water course is appropriate, certainly, that could also be a recommendation that's put forward from this committee to council. As Mr. Mack has indicated, you know, that that particular issue will still come forward to council through development permit, development slash variance permit at some future date. But certainly, if if committee, if the committee's supportive of it, you know, certainly a recommendation to that effect, you know, will will certainly, certainly assist. to that effect, you know, will, will certainly, certainly assist council in making its final decision when the application does come forward for consideration. I think the other thing too is should council, if council is in favor of the, the concept, the other part of the motion would be to allow staff to work with the, with Mr. Mack and his, and his clients to amend the, the existing covenants to reflect the, the proposal that's being put forward.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I'm just trying to figure out on the spot here how to put together, you know, a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to council that would capture everything that's being discussed this evening. And I'm really getting stretched on that, but looks like Councilor Jones may have a recommendation, and we'll see.
Well, I'm just wondering if a motion can go on for the council meeting next week, that the council consider the expression of support for the proposal? Am I really prepared to make the big decisions right now? I, I like to reflect a little bit, but these have been good discussions, and there's a lot of excellent and good stuff here that, that I see for sure. I just would prefer not to be put on the spot this evening.
Well, in, in my view, I think Committee of the Whole doesn't really have to do anything. We can just receive the presentation this evening and then just do a follow-up motion. It's too late for next week anyways. The agenda's being prepared, it'll be reviewed and sent out within the next day or so. So it's a little late for that, but I think what we could do is have it on, just looking ahead, geez, I think it'll be the end of the month agenda.
Through the, through the council, you're talking about the, the next council meeting after next week? I think it's the, the first meeting, May 3rd.
Is it May 3rd?
Yes.
Yeah. Hmm. Counselor Lerner, if you have a thought, go ahead.
Yes, I mean, overall, I like the, the concept plan, and I like what I see here, but I, I would want to craft a motion appropriately in consultation with staff because it looks like there's a few parts to it. There's a part regarding authorization to work on, on covenants, and authorize, and maybe a potential to, about the setbacks, relaxation. There's a few things. So I think that if we can craft a motion in consultation with staff that's appropriate to, for this, that maybe it could go on the, the May 3rd agenda. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Director Limshu?
Your worship through the council, I mean, based on the feedback and the comments that I've heard around the table, I'm, I'm, you know, it seems like the Committee of the Whole is generally in favor with the revised proposal. And certainly, based on that, and, you know, based on the minutes, we can certainly come back with an appropriate motion for, for council to, to consider.
Yeah. And that's a funny thing about the Committee of the Whole is like, we really don't make any decisions.
No.
We're just here to essentially receive information and then make recommendations back to council. And in, in terms of, and maybe through to Mr. Mack, is there a timeline that you're operating under? Maybe that, that would probably help staff and council kind of determine what the sense of urgency is.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, worship. It's certainly, yeah, certainly my clients are eager to move forward. You know, we, we got the rezoning approval in October, and then obviously, this is, this process is sort of, you know, slowed us down and, and stopped us in our tracks here for the past few months. So from that perspective, certainly, we're eager to move forward. Again, fully acknowledging that the Committee of the Whole is not a, a body that, that has a, you know, specific decision-making authority. You know, we weren't, I, I didn't come here tonight expecting to get approval for anything or a formal approval for anything. You know, as I said earlier, I think even just a, a motion to sort of generally support the concept as proposed is essentially, we're just looking for feedback at this stage that, that tells us that we're on the right track. You know, we don't want to continue moving forward on, on the basis of this proposal if, if it's going to get, you know, shut down when it comes forward formally. So if there were concerns, obviously, we would like to hear them and then try to address them. But if there is general support, then, you know, something along those lines at very high level, it just gives us that assurance that, yeah, we can take the next steps and, and then bring forward the development permit application and the subdivision application.
Okay, sure. Thank you for that. So yes, in my mind, I'm trying to process this, and, and I think you may have a solution anyways. But through to staff, in terms of next week's agenda, how, is it a big one or is it a little one? Is, I know the little ones can take a lot of time to go through as well, but.
And that's why we're hesitant to describe it as little. There are very few items on the open portion. You do have a closed, so.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I need to hear. So I, I think through to council, and you can leave it in my trusty hands, and what I will do is work with staff and bring in a late motion to next, next week's meeting to deal with this. And then at that point, we can contemplate it probably a little bit more thoroughly. So, and I think that's probably the best we can do this evening, and I think that'll probably get the most, you know, responsive way of dealing with this. So I'll probably have to work with Director Limshu on crafting said motion, and then I'll just bring it as a lead item. So, Counselor Lerner?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that's a good solution. If I may request through your worship to staff that there were some, if it's possible to include with any, with the motion, copies of these diagrams so we can, we can see them, but also there were a copy of the, the biologist's report, that'd be very helpful as well. Thank you.
That should be online right now. It's under the application, and it should be under business, the business tab and applications. So, and then through to staff.
Thank you.
With respect to the presentation slides, I'm, I'm assuming that would be part of this evening's.
Yes, it'll be posted to the website tomorrow.
Sure. So we'll have the, council will have access to that as well. So again, I'll, I'll just bring forward a, a motion to next meeting, and I think that will encapsulate what was discussed this evening. So, unless there's anything further. Okay. We'll move on the agenda. So we'll need, and again, thank you, Mr. Mack, for coming this evening to give us that presentation. All right. So we just need Counselor Savage. Okay. Noting that's 7:57, Counselor Savage has returned to the meeting, and now we're on to item 6A under new business, council code of conduct for review. So through to council, obviously, this is, makes up the bulk of our agenda this evening, or the materials anyways. Council for discussion. So Counselor Lerner, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes. Well, first, a thank you to staff for providing this information. I think it was, some of it was on a previous agenda, so I, I read through that previously and again now. Definitely provides some thorough information. I know that the previous council did a lot of work on establishing a code of conduct, and I, I, my, my recommendation, but I'd love to hear what other people have to say here around the table, my recommendation is that, I know it's just a committee of the whole now, but at a future meeting that we adopt the existing code of conduct that we have on file, and I think that it covers things. We have a council that works very well together. We have a, a mayor that chairs the meetings very well. And I think that the code of conduct we have on file, which is quite recent in my, my opinion, is sufficient. I don't think, I don't think we need to spend weeks or months going through editing line by line, the code of conduct. I think that's something that we've seen on bylaws can take a very long time. And if in the future we determine that we need to amend it, we can do that at any time. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, through the rest of it.
Is that a motion? No, can we do a little reference?
Not yet. I want to hear what others have to say, but thank you.
Sure. So, Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Sure. I'll, I'll speak up on this, code of conduct being something I've found somewhat interesting for, for a while, having worked with them before. So I've gone through this one and through the many pages that have accompanied it for a direction that we might consider going in, and I have put some thought into that. And what it boils down for me is that a code of conduct is, is basically something that functions on an honor system. It, we, we read it, we, some of these things speak more closely to us than others, but at the end of the day, each of us make our own decision about how we treat others, how we manage ourselves, and all of these things, which are actually addressed in a code of conduct, integrity, respect, accountability. And my feeling is that individuals who are not going to behave with integrity, respect, accountability, aren't going to, whether they have a code of conduct or not, they're probably just going to exhibit those behaviors. So I don't really feel that a code of conduct makes somebody behave with integrity, respect, and accountability, just to pick those portions of it. What I do feel about the group of people around me on council, and counselors and the mayor, is that I feel a, a trust and a respect for each of my colleagues. And I would be comfortable saying that I'm, I'm not concerned about some of the things that have happened in, in other councils. There's some atrocious meetings you can watch from other communities right now where you just wonder, whoa, these people have gone AWOL. But, you know, I look around at this group, and I, I just don't have those concerns, and I don't feel if I did that a code of conduct was going to really change anything anyway. The citizens of Lanceville, in my opinion, have put together an excellent team on council, one I really look forward to working to, working with for, for the future, the near future at least. And I personally don't want to spend hours and hours and hours examining all the ways that we could go if we wanted to take our code of conduct and expand it into a lengthy regulated document. So what I support is that as we are obligated to review and consider a code of conduct, I want to hear that everybody has done that. And personally, I'm very happy with the one that was here from the last council, and that, that works for me, and, and that's all I have to say on the subject really. Thanks.
Additional speakers? Come on, Counselor Savage, you've been sitting out for a while. You must have something to say.
All right. I'll get warmed up here. So I've got a 600-page code of conduct I'd like to present for you. You're whipped if you misbehave, and you have to spend the weekend with Mr. Blood to have him straighten you out. So, no, I totally agree. This was written, our current one, by the UBCM. Now, one of the advantages of it, when it's done like that, is it's already been vetted for labor laws, Canada Charter of Rights and Freedoms, et cetera. So, and I think it's how you should conduct your life. It's got some very good principles in there. So, and I totally agree that it's not going to change someone's behavior. I've learned that the only remedy is court, period. Even if fellow counselors censor you, it ends up in court to resolve. So, so I feel it's individual responsibility, and you answer to the public at the end of your term. That's how you're disciplined or, you know, pay a penalty for misconduct. So, so anyway, I will fully support our current one. It's very well-rounded and covers everything. So I will leave it at that, and I'll let Mayor Swain give his two cents worth, and then I will make that motion to retain the current one, or someone else can. And I think that's, that about covers it. Thank you.
Counselor Mundell, do you have anything? Okay. Yeah, for myself, you know, obviously, being on council last term and bringing this into play, it's, it was an interesting exercise at that time, and, and it's a required, I think it's definitely a requirement, we need to have something down that states how we will behave as elected official and, and, you know, and serve the residents, as it states right in it. It is both an honor and a privilege to serve the public, and you can never lose sight of that. And I think that's, you know, at the very core of our code of conduct, that's what we should be always striving to, to continue to do. So I, I don't see there being any necessary changes. We can go on and on and on about this, and, and I know some places, there's some municipalities and their counselors, mayors, they're always looking for a bigger stick to enforce the rules. And, and, and the reality is, is in my experience thus far, is there is no such stick in existence. You know, it's a, unless it goes down the, the path of court and lawsuits and all sorts of nonsense, and it's, it's, you know, anyways, I'm just at a loss for words on it. It's just, it's just not worth it to try and keep looking for it. I think we just try to adhere to what we have in front of us, and we'll be just fine. It's already been made comment on, or commented on this evening. You don't have to look too far already this early into the term at other municipalities and, and what's happening, and my God, it just makes you wonder. But, but, you know, and, you know, reflecting upon that, I think we're doing an excellent job, and the level of decorum in our meetings is excellent. I'm very proud to be mayor of this council, and, yeah, so it's, I think that's, it's, in its very essence, speaks for itself. So, so I, I really, I can have nothing to add to this. I think I totally support the recommendation that's probably going to be made very shortly here, and, yeah, that's, that's all I really have to say. So, Counselor Lerner?
No, I just want to say it's an honor to have this mayor, so thank you. Unless Counselor Savage wishes to, okay, okay, I'll just make the motion, and I hope this is the correct wording, this is my first committee of the whole, that the committee of the whole recommend to council the adoption of the existing code of conduct, and I believe that's policy number 3002-1.
I think that motion works. Do we have a second or?
Second.
Second by Counselor Savage.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Counselor Savage?
No, looks good. Well done. And just so you know that you can make motions at committee of the whole, but they're always considered recommendations. They don't become formalized until a regular council meeting.
In essence, they really don't mean anything. They're just a recommendation. Okay. Unless there's anything further, I will call the question. All those in favor, opposed, as carried unanimously. And at this point, we'll go to item, unless there's anything further on the council code of conduct. No? Okay, so we'll move on. Public clarification, put periods, a person is recognized by the chair to speak must first state their name and address. For the record, may speak for, speak once for up to two minutes unless council resolves otherwise, and are limited to providing comment. Listen on this evening's agenda, comments must be, sorry, must be directed to the chair, must not be directed to individual members of council, staff, or the audience, and must not include personal issues. Anybody wishing to take the podium? Okay. Seeing none, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.